And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the right hand, upper right hand corner. When we reach the point of meeting where the public has the opportunity to adjust counsel, if you click that button, you'll get your opportunity to adjust counsel. Please stand for the next meeting. Kathy, can you please follow along?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Counselor Delva.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Reish.
Here.
Counselor Scamperey. Counselor Scamperey. Form present.
We have several presentations tonight, again, with the city in authority.
So we just had the sign for Marion and Mayor Julius Frank. We just had the dedication for that tonight. That was a three-year project because of COVID and the family was able to be here tonight as well, so that was really nice. We have another historical sign that is on order and that is for the Nazi pilot who was captured here. It should be here in a few more weeks. We have a stone purchased for the Zeig Montreuil monument and we also, I just got word that the plaque has been completed for that. So the installation should be taking place pretty soon and we will have a little ceremony to dedicate that monument as well. I'm continuing to access, to accession and catalog the historical artifacts that are in my office as that had not been done before and I'm creating a book so that we know what's in there. Priorities are still preservation of those artifacts and figuring out what we have and also continuing to educate the public about city history through articles in the journal, movies, and the walking tours. The ongoing problem that we have at this point is that the space is really not large enough for all of the historical artifacts and for me to work effectively in preserving those artifacts and to actually have space to meet people who want to come in and talk to me and show me artifacts as well. So I guess that's it for the historian's report.
Thank you.
I'd like to give her $20,000 in seed money to list the St. Lawrence psychiatric centers in the National Register of Historic Places or ask the Department of Mental Health for that $20,000 so it can be completed. Harped on that enough, but just came to mind.
And we are working, as we're finishing the renovations of some of the offices, we're working on relocating a better space for Julie to be able to house her items. She's got this very small old closet back here in council chambers. So there's a lot of stuff in there that needs to be stored properly and protected a little bit better. So I hope we'll have a solution for that over the next couple of months where we can relocate some of her stuff to.
And did the museum idea ever come to fruition? And you were able to disclose that?
I can send you an email.
Oh.
We do have a space. It will be announced actually on Thursday.
I can wait.
Yeah, if you could, if you could wait. But yes, we have a space, we have the keys, we're getting ready to paint.
Any luck getting money from the county, Julie, or anybody else yet?
Yeah, we have some feelers out for that. We had a private donor come forward. I have a letter in to Northern New York Community Foundation and also Sweetgrass Foundation has also contacted us as well. So it's moving along very quickly at this point.
Could we reach out to maybe like the state on the armory? And maybe that would be a final destination for a historical museum would be wonderful.
Yes, it would.
What about a million dollars?
As long as, as long as we don't own it.
Well, I'm just saying that this, I mean, there's, there's a lot of people in Augsburg from the history of the different shipbuilders and such that they actually have these boats and they would put them on display also. You could come up with different ways to do funding, some funding, but.
You're, you're singing my song.
I'm just saying, I, I think that that, that would be a good final resting place.
Yeah, they're putting the armory on their excess list and if the city wants it, it's a dollar.
We.
Hey, I, I saw it, it was valuable.
We've had some good discussion about it. We certainly all agree it would be a great facility. What we've talked about is not seeing Julie get, you know, the museum organization getting backed up against a wall with an enormous bill just to maintain, you know, such a big facility. But we're, I think, I think we're going to look at it.
It would be a partnership with some other.
Yeah, the state's going to offer it up for a dollar, so.
That's what I mean, so it's, and it just got a million dollar roof.
Oh, we toured it and it's, it's in excellent shape. There's no lead, there's no asbestos, it's got a new roof. It's in, it's in awesome shape. But yeah, we've definitely thought about it.
If there was a not-for-profit entity that was interested in it or somehow unaffiliated with the city, like the Clayton Bolt Museum, then it'd be eligible for funding, you know, to do displays and things like that.
We've, we've had some unofficial discussion with them going on now that the, the authorization there and it's ready to be put on the surplus list, now we can move forward. There's, there's been two or three parties interested. Julie and I have had some discussion about it before. Just now that it's official, they can start communicating officially about it. So we'll see where it goes. Great building, no question, maintained by the, you know, the, excuse me, the National Guard estate. So it's, it's, it's in great shape. It's just a, it's a big building to maintain, I'll be honest.
It's also on the National Register, Historic Register, but it doesn't have a sign.
Yeah. We'll get you there.
Thank you. Next, I will make a motion to move through executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 in the Civil Service law.
How, how long will that? No second. How long would that take or should we do personal appearances first so they don't have to wait? I'll do that first.
Okay.
Kathy, can you please call the hall?
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Counselor Delva.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reish.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey.
Yes.
Approved.
Yeah. There. Yeah. I'm sorry. Is that? All right. Yes. I'm sorry. 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 It's. Yes. I know. Thank you. Please. It's. And I told you about it. God, it's. So. Yeah. Sir. I was. So there. Well, I. I told. Um. So. And. So I think. Oh. I do. Sure. Yeah. 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 Which. Oh, sorry. E. I'm trying to say. I love you. It's. Yes. Well, I was. I didn't. Thanks. I was. That's why I didn't. Around like. Around. But if you're not like. It's hard. See this. There's. So. Yeah. 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 Um. I mean, I watch it. I don't. I want. Yeah. I, um. I would. I would shop. I'm ready. I never. What's the? Oh. She. She. Well. I still. I'm. Yes. So.
Let the record reflect that all members of council are still present. We do not have any more information.
Mayor, you skipped the final presentation. Just one more.
Budget.
Yes, sir. Council, just by way of update, a couple of topics in regards to the budget. We've been working through the topic we talked about, which was the amount of money that it appears the capital fund is in deficit. Have a more detailed level report at the next meeting for this, but in a nutshell, right now, to make our capital fund whole, we're looking at about a 1.1 million dollar transfer from the general fund to the capital fund. This is for projects, some dating back as far as 2014 or 2015, up to the projects that we've got in the pipeline today. Think it wasn't anything obviously nefarious or anything at this point or criminal. I just think it was a matter of we just didn't have the money, so we were using the money in the capital fund. When the match payment came up, we used the money that was there, et cetera, back and forth. We were basically hoping to replenish the capital fund with additional grants, bands, bonds, the money that was put in there. Started out with minuscule amounts, 50,000 or 60,000, hundred thousand dollar matches. I'll provide all your detailed sheet in the next couple of days to review, and then we'll have a more formal presentation. But I'm, I'm just pointing these things out to you because this is another example where, again, our fund balance, you know, we've advertised as at roughly 6.1 million dollars, but here's likely 1.1 million dollars that will be moved off the fund balance to cover shortfalls in the capital fund. So it just, as we're deliberating other things to do and all this, you know, a lot of discussion about having this exorbitant fund balance and what we should be spending on, I just want to keep drawing attention to, you know, the, the numbers that get talked about out there, largely, we've talked about two or two and a half million dollars. Keep in mind, those are, that's the city's contingency fund, let's call it, the emergency fund. But that doesn't include, again, the things that we don't have in the fund balance, which are capital reserves in the fire department, the police department, the DPW for replacement of large ticket items. Again, imagine we have a million dollar fire truck to replace today. We know that truck has a shelf life. Let's say that we just bought it, you know, roughly 20 years. We should be making a deposit every year. We have none of those. So I just caution council going forward on the, you know, on the use of this fund balance. Again, as we continue to work through paying off, you know, debt, things that arise like this where we realize we've got a significant shortfall. Our projections going into 2023, again, just for council consideration, we move the organization as it stands right now, 2022 budget, just pick the budget up as council approved it last year and move it to 2023, no change in structure. We've marked off the programs that were one-time-only things like the quarter million dollars for the citywide assessment. Right now, we're estimating still 1.2 to 1.4 million dollar deficit going into 2023. And just for, just for clarity, that doesn't calculate right into, right now, potential health insurance increase. We've seen no increase in the last two years. I don't expect that to be maintained for a third year. Retirement, excuse me, debt service, et cetera. So I'm just, the last number I wanted to put out there is, again, there's been discussion about, well, you cut the revenue 20%. You cut your highest source of revenue 20%. Right now, if we restored the revenue cut, if we, and we went one step farther, we raised taxes to the highest point the constitutional tax limit will allow, we generate about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars perhaps. We, we would barely cover the shortfall that we're in right now just to move the organization forward. So as we, as we continue, you know, the demand for the services we want and advocating for those services, I don't, I don't know how it continues to be lost on some members of council that paying for these services is what has become problematic. We don't, we're just not generating the revenue faster than the expense money. So again, if you, if we hadn't made those tax cuts, we'd, we'd barely be able to move the organization as it sits today into next year, today. So all those cuts would have been made. I mean, those are, those are real numbers. Our next opportunity to see any real increase in revenue will be in 2024, when we expect the city assessments to go up, which will create us some gap, you know, higher gap. But again, that, that means raising taxes. Our sales tax projections are, are running just slightly ahead of what our, our prediction was at 3 million dollars. Let's say today, if we stayed constant to what we've collected through the first five months, maybe we're at 3.5 million, which would be good. We, we exceed it. But it wouldn't be the 1.1 or 1.2 million dollar additional we need to fund the organization just as we are right now. So I just ask you to keep considering these numbers. As we promised, we're going to do the budget a little bit different this year, and then I hope by August, we're going to bring you water, and we'll do the, the water budget deliberations so we can focus solely on water without trying to, to debate and work through the challenges with all three enterprises at one time. So we'll do water in August, we'll do sewer in September, and then we'll start the general fund budget early in August. I'll give you a preliminary, preliminary budget in August. Because right now, it's going to be fairly simple. I'm just going to take the organization, add all the known costs that we know are increases, and say, this, this is where we are, deficit. It's, it's going to be a real challenge. So we, we have debate tonight about one police officer, two police officers, or 10 for that matter. It, it really, it really isn't about that at this point. It's, it's just about how are we going to fund all these things? Funding what we have today is going to be a challenge next year. Adding anything to that, and there will be other adds. Health insurance will go up, retirement contribution will go up. Adding any positions will, will drive that budget up. Borrowing money. So if we're successful in getting, I mean, let's just say we, we get 20 million in grants, you know, we do, we do great. We get 10 million, but it comes with a 10 or 15 or 20% match with that. I mean, that's, that's more money that has got to come from that general fund. And it's the one thing that, as I'm pointing out, telling you the capital fund, we haven't been doing. For all these, these grant programs, we haven't been moving our money from the general fund over to the capital fund because the money wasn't there to do it. So I just, the, the dilemma, the debate about the money, I, I don't notice, I see, I don't know how to debate it any different. I don't know how to present the facts to council any different. I don't know how to present the facts to the public any different. I mean, someone can certainly debate less people in DPW, more people in the police department, less people in fire. I mean, you can, you can debate that. But I think everybody would agree, all three major departments are staffed at, at, at pretty minimal levels. And, and any further reductions to either of those departments has to come with service decrement. I think tonight, that's what you're going to hear as we talk about the police department, is it's, we really are there. It's one or the other. It's more resources to do more missions or less people and, and less missions. There's, there's no more, you know, how do we, how do we do more with less or get more with the people we have? Where, where, where we've been, and we've been there for, for some time, and then the inevitable bad happens. We have, you know, two or three long-term injuries in a force that's already minimally aggregately staffed, and that, that just drives us further into, into the problem. So if council can come up with other analysis they'd like to look at, if there's something different as we get ready to prepare for the 2023 budget, certainly would like to, to hear what those suggestions are. But the, these are real numbers. The, the artificial argument about the fund balance, I, I promise everybody and everybody in this room, it's artificial. 6 million dollars is not a lot of money. With the, with the history of this city, the aging infrastructure, the, the number of black holes that exist on any given day, this building needs a $500,000 roof that we, we haven't found a way to fund yet, is, is a small one. Having fund balance that is able, you know, to be ascertained to take care of a crisis or a project is a good thing. If we took that 6 million dollar budget today and we just used the recommended calculation of 17, 18, let's just say 20%, and we kept two, two and a half million dollars in there as a city emergency fund, just, that's just our emergency money. That's our survival money if some, a crisis happens. And then we said, okay, to put a fire truck, capital replacement program, you know, where, what's the age of the fire trucks now? How much money ought to be sitting there with anticipation of when is the next buy? Police department, big ticket items, whether it's vehicles, ballistic vest weapons, radio systems, DPW, snowplows, you know, any, any, any loaders, backhoes, excavators, all those things that at any given time, we don't have, you know, a quarter million, half million, a million dollars sitting around. If we, if we move some of that money to each of those departments and established even 50% of where they ought to be currently today with a reasonable replacement cycle, there'd be nothing left in that fund balance except about that two and a half million dollars that we'd like to maintain as a, as a contingency. So I, again, I know, I know there's, uh, there's angst amongst that. There's people that think we're hoarding money perhaps that we don't need to hoard. Also, keep in mind, we're looking, you know, right now, this ready project that stands to have about a 3.5, 7, 8 million dollar city contribution on top of it. I don't say that we would spend all the fund balance to make up that city contribution, but we're going to pay for it somehow. And whether we pay for some of it with that money or we bond for it, and then add a 250 to 300,000 dollar payment to the general fund that is already shortfall, it's, it's still money we've got to figure out where, where it comes from. So there's no, there's just no shortages of places to put money. And, and like I said, as council knows, we haven't even talked capital projects outside these large things in the last few years. Again, a roof on this building, half a million dollars. It's, we're not going to only go so much longer. The outside facade on it, I mean, roofs, garage doors, maintenance of, of city facilities. So there, there's no shortage of, of places where money, money could go. And I only get concerned when we start talking about using fund balance to fund salaries. If you said, well, could you fund two police officers, for instance, and the rest of this year with the fund balance? Well, certainly there's money in there for that, but what do we do next year? Where does that additional 260,000 for two more bodies come for a full work year next year in a budget that's already looking at 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars in, in a deficit? So those, those are the, those are the questions. It, I understand that it's shocking information to a certain degree, especially with all the cuts that have been made in the last couple of years. How can we still be, how can we still be behind it? And again, the answer is just simple. Are the expenses now even greater with the rate of inflation going up on everything that we, we purchase as well? The expenses are increasing faster than, than the rate of inflation.
So last year, we collected 4.7 million in sales tax. So with, you're saying with the shift to preemption and that, that we're going to lose a million dollars just from going from the county agreement to our own sales tax collection?
Again, council, I, I've, I projected 3 million. I think that based on what we've seen so far, we're likely to hit about 3.5 million. I think that will be, I think that will be a good year.
Oh, you came up a half a million.
Yeah, well, but, but I want you to keep in mind, I've come up a half a million because the first three months were based on the old sharing. I, I gave you the projection based on what I think it would be for a whole year without sharing. Because I, because again, there's no sense in council spending that additional money this year that there won't, won't be next year.
So when we, when we adopted the budget, we didn't know we were going to get the last penny. So, yeah. Yeah. And the 1.2 to 1.4 million dollar deficit was, is based on your assumption of 3.5 million in collections now?
Just three.
Just three.
Yep.
What are the 2014, 15 capital projects that you referenced?
Uh, and again, council, we'll give you a detailed list on this. I, I can say.
The Black Bridge?
Did, yes, starting with Diamond Infrastructure in 2014, Dazney River Park, 2015. Two projects in relation to the, um, the, the Bridge Connector, 2016, 2018. Uh, I'll give you a detailed list of, of each one of them. There's a, there's a full breakout here. I just, we're just getting these numbers, final scrub down. And I'm trying to make sure we, we take down to the nth degree is any money we're expecting to come in. So I make sure we've, we've defrayed all that. Uh, one of the projects on here that adds to the overall cost of the.
In that, in that, you'll include any grants that came with any of those projects?
Everything is in.
But each one of those grants would have been a match.
Absolutely.
They didn't have the money to pay, and that's why we're paying it now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so that part.
Full-on match?
In, in most cases, yes, sir.
Yes, that broke down for us as well.
Is the audit underway? Should be.
Soon. But, but, but I understand the audit, and, and I think this is, I think it's one of the things everyone should understand about the audit. The audit doesn't look for things like this. The audit looks to make sure that we're doing what we say we do with money. We're following our city procedures and processes. It doesn't necessarily dig, dig through.
No, but it gives you a snapshot of last year, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Would a risk assessment, take a deep dive into something such as that?
No, I don't think so. Um, I mean, again, I think without, I, I mean, again, you're getting what's, you know, outside of a, of a, of a forensic audit, taking every year back to them. I think right now, we're taking it somewhat pure for you. There's X amount of money sitting in that capital fund right now, not much, a couple hundred thousand. And if right now, we would have to pay all of our matches on all these projects up until, let's say, the, the first phase of the ready is going to start this year and end this year. That would be the last project. Every project from there back, if we had to pay out all those projects. So some of these projects, again, you know, the 2017 flooding starts back a while. It takes, you know, several years to get through them, but at some point, and that's just what happens. You say, well, the project may be inceptioned this year, but we're not going to have to pay our money this year. And so do you remember to put the money in? Do you remember to budget that money, et cetera? I mean, a lot of it just is, you know, going back and reconcile that. So we've taken it, you know, fairly plain with that. Every project dating back as, as far as still on the books, you know, what's left out there, what's the money in the account? And what do we need to, again, if we had to make all those payments, you know, till, up to this point, you know, what, what should be there? And what do we need to, again, if we had to make all those payments, you know, till, up till this point, you know, what, what should be there?
So a risk assessment is not, excuse me, risk assessment isn't necessarily a forensic dive.
No.
Forensic audit, they're, they're one, they're, they're completely two separate entities. So what a risk assessment, the advantageous for us?
No, I mean, I think you have, excuse me, I think you had a similar done council just before the financial restructuring board report. I think the financial restructuring board report gave you really what your high risk factors were, which were encroaching upon that constitutional tax limit. That, you know, we've remitted that. And I think that, that's a point that is lost on people that are critics of the tax cut. Trying to align that we cut taxes to, you know, I don't know, better political posture, make friends with this, make friends. The reality is we were at our constitutional tax limit. And in, in the last two years, we were exceeding our constitutional tax limit had we not had exclusions. Exclusions meaning debt. And so as, so as we paid down debt, our exclusions went away, which ran the risk of throwing us over the constitutional tax limit. So, you know, what, what was the safe number to reduce the tax rate to create a cushion between the tax rate and the constitutional tax limit? The, the good news was here and all the bad news with COVID coming, you know, the financial restructuring board's biggest risk was, hey, your property values have been flat for so long that likely there's no such thing as flat property tax values. They've either gone up or gone down and they clearly haven't gone up. So likely they've gone down. And if that's the case, then your ceiling is coming down on you. So that, that was their big worry. Now, you know, COVID only further exacerbated that. However, you know, we saw the opposite occur. Properties, sales have picked up, prices have increased. So we certainly expect during this citywide reassessment that property values will go up, which will raise our, our assessable value potential. So good thing. Bad thing is that it will give us the capability to raise taxes and we'll, and we'll very quickly be right up around that 16, 17.
That addresses our constitutional tax limit, which was one of the purposes we're doing. We wanted to address our constitutional tax limit. But did you ask the FRB board for funding to help pay for that GAR program?
Uh, we did not. And we, and we certain, we certainly can.
It was something that they also agreed with us through our list of suggestions to them.
Yep.
That needs to happen in the city. So it'd be nice to see them pay for it.
Yeah, we, we could entertain. I, I think it begs the question for, and some of the questions we feel that already, um, I've seen a bunch of comments on social media in the last couple of days. Since the nose went out, you know, will be what is the frequency going to be? How are we going to do assessments? And we haven't, we haven't reassessed in the last couple of years. But this year I sent, you know, council a notice, we, our equalization rate was reduced to 96 from 100%. Now, most everyone in the state with very few exceptions also was reduced by some incremental amount because sales happened this year so fast. Nobody could keep up with the assessment program. So it's sort of a shot across the bow from the state. Hey, we're watching, we're seeing your property sales are going up, your assessable value is definitely risen. You need to, you need to do something. In our case as a city, if we start dropping in multipliers of 10, you know, 90, 80, whatever, we also will start losing aid in those same percentages. So we've, we have every incentive to remain at 100% assessment valuation.
Okay. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So this brings us to personal hearings at this time. Anyone attending in person who might be addressing the council, please come down and follow me. You will have five minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Trulli. I live at 214 Hamilton Street. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I think it needs to be some reconciliation between information previously provided you about current finances and what was presented tonight. I refer back to this schedule, which was in your April 25th board packet, council packet for the meeting that was canceled. So I don't know if it was ever reviewed publicly or not. But it was a projection of revenue and expense, I presume the general fund through 2027. And when I look at the 2023 figures, the projected revenue based on the assumptions that were listed, 13,750,000. Projected expense, 14,450,000 calls for a projected deficit in 2023 of $700,000. That's a little bit different than a million two to million four. Could be different assumptions. Perhaps the city controller was factoring in three and a half million in sales tax versus 3 million significant. I don't know. The numbers just don't, aren't the same or close to being the same. So I, I think you need some reconciliation of those two numbers to get a better picture of where things might be. Secondly, with regards to the home rule legislation, back during the budget presentation at the second meeting last November. In her presentation, the city controller stated that had home rule legislation been in place for 2022 at 1%, she would be encouraged to add an additional two and a half million dollars to the budget. Well, that means to me a half a percent is a million, two million, three. And that's revenue I don't know that's accounted for in doing a projection for 2023. I mean, to me, if you take the potential three and a half million dollars we're talking about in 2022, add this million two from the home rule. We're at 4.7 million, which is where we were in 2021. And I think a million two addresses a potential million two deficit that we're talking about. And in fact, if that deficit's closer to this $700,000, you're $500,000 ahead of the game going ahead in 2023 to start looking at restoration of public services. So you got some inconsistent information I think you need clarification on before you make decisions. Thank you.
How are you guys doing tonight? Um, I'm Jeremiah Evans. I'm the Augsburg Blue Clotter Unit President, 8401. And I would just like to, uh, talk to you about the proposal Dank taking over our wastewater and water plants. Dank was brought in several years ago to fill, uh, for a operator at a waste plant because we lost our operator. And it was a hybrid model. They would oversee the plant, our workers would still work. At first our employees were nerve, unsure about Dank coming in. We, uh, we took some tours of other plants with a carry tunnel and they reassured that they wanted no control of our plants. So for the last few years, um, you know, Dank's worked with us and it's been going pretty smooth. Currently there's six city employees that, that control the duties inside and out of the water and wastewater facilities. They also assist the DPW and other tasks as needed. You know, would Dank do some of those tasks? You know, they still, you know, the workers at these facilities also like snowball the bridges, they mow grass. I mean, you know, when it comes down to it, we want you to, you know, compare apples to apples. Those just don't look at, you know, figures, you know, what are they going to do for us? You know, most of the employees that work right now at those facilities live, are city residents. They can respond with a minute's. Would Dank employees be able to do that? And I spoke at, um, a Dank board manager, board member meeting. And I asked if those six people would still work in just our facilities? And they said, no, they'll work where they're needed. So that's something to take into consideration. Her understanding that, uh, Dank was, you know, developed back in the day to help municipalities fill a vacancy that the municipality could no longer, no longer fill. Like at our water plant, we have a 4A operator at our water plant. We, we don't need Dank in there. We don't need their services at all. And within a year and a half, I believe we'll have a, uh, a 4A operator for the wastewater plant. So I mean, we don't, we don't really, we don't need them. We're not in dire straits to have them take over our plants. We would like to sit down, CSA would like to sit down with the council and know, let's, uh, talk about this. Let's bring things to the table that maybe you guys aren't aware of. You know what I mean? Just don't look at just the number, you know, know what really goes on. Because we've done some of our, run some numbers in our organization and we know that Dank employees make more money than city employees. They have New York State retirement, so the contribution's got to be pretty close to what the city pays. The health insurance is very similar. So we don't know how Dank can bring apples, apples to the table and do it any cheaper. As it was, we've already lost one, one trained city employee that they left the money. So we're just kind of curious, you know, how are they going to bring it to the table any cheaper? You know, one thing we're thinking there, they, are they really going to have, uh, six of the employees there all the time? I mean, because Dank told us we need six employees to run those two facilities at all times. So I mean, you know, we're just trying to figure out how they're going to do it. You know, maybe the other, you know, the city can even use our facilities, uh, to, to rev, uh, generate some revenue like with Lisbon or, you know, Hewleton sewers coming here. Maybe we can make some money with our plants to offset the costs. I know Dank in their meeting, they, they really want our facilities for our training organization because they're the biggest plants in the water, in the wastewater. You know, they can, they can run their workers through it and they can even branch out further. So I mean, that's, you know, they, they have their own thoughts about taking over the plants. You know, they like to use the first training facility.
Why couldn't we do that?
We could.
Right?
Well, we could charge Dank, or you want to use our facilities for training? Well, we'll, you know, a little pay.
Good concept.
Another revenue source.
Because Carrie Tull was very adamant in her, uh, presentation to their Dank board members that, you know, you can get a 1A water license and you get a 4A sewer license. So, and they can go anywhere in the state, they can branch out. You know, there's, these facilities are everywhere this big. So, you know, there's, there's more to it than VCI. So we just want you guys to, to think about it. You know, it's just, it's just not a number. You know, you got six, six people that live here in the city that they don't, they don't want to lose their jobs. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to present some information to all you. And I had a speech prepared tonight to go along with this information. But I decided just sitting here now, I'm going to give you two weeks before I would even bring that to yous. I also want to say that Jeremiah Evans just gave an amazing speech. I agree with everything he said.
You're not sending me some malware, are you?
Well, I said all of yous, but you gave me one the other day. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg. I think y'all know who I am. I mean, I'm off. Back 2021 on the marquee at the theater, said goals for 2021. Reduce taxes. Rebuild Augsburg. Where? Better quality of life. Augsburg, the way it is now? Does anybody have a better quality of life today than they've had? The last two month, last month, two attempted murders, a homicide. You see daily on Facebook, people being robbed in daylight and daylight, going into people's garages while they're in their yards. You've got robberies, burglaries. More people in Augsburg have security systems today than don't have them. This is not Augsburg. What has happened? What's happened? We don't have a police force that can enforce it. We don't have enough people on the street. Back not long ago, you had five detectives. You had a lieutenant, you had a sergeant, you had a narcotics officer, you had a juvenile officer, a detective, and you had a general detective. When they weren't working on their own cases, they'd work with the others. Now you have one detective. And as of today, according to the report, 12 patrolmen. Just the other night, down at the marina, broad daylight, guy going to steal a jet ski. And why? Because they know it's going to take time and they can get away before an officer is there. There are more people in this city that tell me today that they locked their doors during the day. Who does that in Augsburg? This is nuts. You know? You guys all know there's a drug problem in this town. Mr. Jelly, you put it in publications. Mike, you know, last night you put on your Facebook page that you know about the crime in Augsburg. But what are you guys doing about it? Nothing. It's been said, I'm a local government disruptor, whatever. And I have a personal agenda. You're right, I do have a personal agenda and there's seven parts to it. My son, my daughter-in-law, and my five grandchildren, who have the right to be safe in this town. And it's the same agenda that every parent and grandparent wants for their children. It's not fear, it's not fiction. The only fear has been put in this town is by the ones that have agreed to what's going on here. The fear that you're going to burn at night, your house is going to burn because there's not going to be enough firemen. The fear that if you have to call the rescue squad and they're out of town, well, are the EMTs going to be able to come or not? And if you've got somebody breaking into your house and there's something going on at the other end of town, well, guess what? You're going to have to wait and hope to God nothing happens to you and your family. And it's not fear and it's not fiction. The only fiction is that you guys are telling people that we're trying to scare them. And people know better. People live this 24/7, 365 days a year. It's ridiculous. This is not the Augsburg that we grew up in. How long do you think these officers are going to be able to sustain what they're doing now? How long without something happening to one of them? Our safety depends on their safety. And the thing that really gets me, really gets me is when I read, this is what you hired the city manager to do. If this is true, whoever, whoever agreed to this, you don't care about this city. It's not safe here and not one of you can honestly look me in the eye and tell me it is. Can you, Mike? No, Mike, I'm not bluster and I'm telling the truth.
This new council, this new administration, we didn't, uh, we didn't.
You hear what you're saying.
We, uh, we, uh, we didn't not pay the county.
Oh. Can I finish, please? Can I please, please finish? Well, let me tell you, whoever agreed to this, you need to resign. You don't care about Augsburg. If you're going to put people in danger, you don't care about Augsburg.
If the city runs out of money, then there'll be no police department. You understand that, right?
If there's no police department, you're not going to have a city.
The city is out of money. Did you not listen to what I said a few minutes ago?
You need to resign and take him with. You need to resign and take him with. I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to sit there and be quiet until, until now. There you are. Your head's up now. When she was talking, you know how many of you people were looking at the papers? I knew that. This is what you're going. Why? I think all these people pay your salaries.
Well, I was paying attention to her, and if they're paying it, they're not paying enough. But I was paying attention.
Not paying enough? Oh, honey, I think you're getting paid way over, but anyway.
Yeah, you would.
You could have paid attention.
I did pay attention.
She is a specialist.
I looked at her the entire time, ma'am.
This isn't a debate period. She has the floor.
She's directing it at me, Mike. I'm not asking you.
She's directing it at all of us.
She, she said, looking down at the paper, I looked at her the whole time.
So, no?
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
It wouldn't have brought me, it wouldn't have brought me up here had you been. Do you want me to tell you who was? Excuse me? You don't need to go off the rails either. What she was saying is real. You want to talk about the county and all the garbage that you guys present in the long spiel's? It's all fantastic. We don't believe a damn word of it. And from now on, for us people that had to stay home because I had a medical reason, speak into the damn microphones. We can't hear you. And it's, and this back and forth. Guys, come on. You're adults. You're put in this position. Start friggin' acting like it. Yeah.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Scott Sargent. I reside at 14 Academy Place here in Augsburg. And I appreciate the opportunity to address council here tonight. I would briefly like to address the staffing issues of our fire department, police department here in Augsburg. I spoke regarding the issue at the last council meeting. I'd just like to clarify my personal viewpoint. Living where I live and seeing what I see in my neighborhood each day, I'm 100% pro-work and 100% pro-job. I will never support cutting jobs or benefits for anyone willing to work, not to our DPW, our safety services, or any other department, especially when I see so many simply choosing not to. Every single day, I see that you do not have to work to have luxuries afforded to you, such as homes, vehicles, et cetera. My neighborhood in close proximity to a school and a daycare has been home to more than one exchange of gunfire and several drug raids. By no means am I trying to trivialize other crimes, but these instances are extreme in nature. And our city police department has been more than responsive and helpful in trying to keep myself and my neighbors safe. I voted for every single person sitting here tonight. If those council members sitting here tonight that had, that support job cuts would have been forthright prior to the election that put them here, if they had simply told the truth and stated their intentions, that cutting jobs was the method they would need to follow in order to make financial gains, I would have respected your opinion, but I would not have voted for you. I voted for you based on your well-documented comments that jobs would be safe. And those comments were deceptive. I won't make the same mistake again, and I don't believe I'm in the minority. Time will tell. Steve commented at the last meeting that there is no underlying agenda on the part of Mike and the majority council in regards to staffing. The reason I don't believe you is that I've already been lied to and my trust has been violated. In a household with two working adults, after all data has been compiled, I saved less than $90 last year in taxes, which is 750 a month or a quarter a day. I'm not a financial expert, but my assumption is that the more money you earn and the more properties and businesses you own, the more you would stand to save. I am by no means attempting to downplay the financial stress that I know many residents face. But I recently ordered two large pizzas and 30 wings from a local establishment and paid $75.75. That's virtually my entire tax savings gone in one meal. If you're going to give me a choice between minimal tax savings and employment opportunities and safety, I'm choosing the latter. Again, I respect each citizen's individual choice and perspective. This one is mine. As a teacher, I can state unequivocally that I often hear about today's generation and all the things they cannot do. They are easily the toughest and most resilient group of students I've ever taught. The problems they face on a daily basis are almost unfathomable, and, and that's what I deal with each day. But at no point will I ever come to a council meeting and ask you to provide solutions for me. It, it's my job to try to generate those solutions. You can drone on ad nauseam regarding past practices or point fingers, pat yourself on the back, et cetera. But at the end of the day, I find it ridiculous that someone would ask for solutions on social media to issues that are being paid to solve. Very well, I might add. If the one who couldn't generate solutions without cutting positions, then you should have at least had the integrity to say just that. As a resident and a taxpayer, I at least deserve the opportunity to elect people based on honesty and integrity, not lies. I, I find it hard to believe that's asking too much. Please add the police officers to our department and save the jobs you said were safe. Just do what you said you would do. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Sovey. I live at 930 Hasbrook Street here in Augsburg. And I just wanted to, um, first of all, say, Mr. Sergeant, I agree with everything you said, and you spoke very eloquently, and I appreciate that. Couple of personal observations that I would like to share, um, again, regarding the staffing issues that have arisen. Um, Augsburg Police Department, the need for increased staffing for the police department is indisputable. We all know it. Crime is rising in Augsburg. Violent crime is on the rise in Augsburg. Chief Kearns has spoken before this council numerous times about the strain of trying to provide full scope of the services for his department with a limited staff, with reduced staff that was instituted by this administration. Um, same thing is true for the Augsburg Fire Department. Um, just shortly, if this council intends to try to make the fire department's contract whole and go back to square one, you're going to try to do that with a pool of 16 people, where that contract was originally written with a pool of 24 employees to fill those holes. If you try to put that department back at five men per shift, you are going to be paying the fifth man overtime, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. It's a huge cost that potentially never would have had to have been spent if these conversations had been had before staffing was cut for these departments. The DPW, again, guys who are working hard out there every day, doing the best with what they have to work with, all these departments being asked to do more with less. And they're doing a fantastic job, but we all know they need more people. That ideally is what the citizens of Augsburg, I think, want to see, is to see services back at the level that they were when this administration was elected. How are we going to pay for it? Yes, I have listened to Mr. Jelly, and I agree. It is a numbers game. You have to find a way to pay for the services. I agree with what you're saying. The problem is this. The citizens of Augsburg elected all of you, as Mr. Sergeant pointed out, because you said jobs would be safe, because you said services would not decrease. That has proven to be a lie. Okay? Where is the money going to come from? Maybe that's a conversation that all of you should have had a little ways back down the road. Okay? Maybe before the contracts got violated, maybe before words like arbitration and overtime and hazard pay and legal fees and settlements started being part of the normal vocabulary around here. Okay? The fact is, we elected you guys to figure out how those things would be paid for. Every single one of you sitting there, we elected you. We are not accountants. We are not tax experts. The average person in the city of Augsburg is not going to answer you on social media and tell you how to solve the city's financial problems. We elected all of you to work on that together. So far, you're doing a really poor job, in my opinion. There's been some great progress. That's fantastic. Let's find a way to make more instead of pointing at who's the minority and who's the majority. How about one city council? They have that in Watertown, they have it in other places. Can we please have that here? We elected you guys to figure out how to pay for these things, and you hired him to advise you. So get the job done, guys. Come on. And with regard to the resolution for Mr. Jelly to become our permanent fire chief, I would love for the council to please explain why that's necessary at this juncture. He has been the acting chief for 22 months. And I'd ask y'all, before you vote tonight, to please consider that two unanimous votes of no confidence should be a huge indication to all of you that not one member of the Augsburg Fire Department has confidence in his leadership of that department. Please consider that. The city has not posted any vacancies for firefighter or for the chief's position. You've not solicited any applications for transfer candidates from other municipalities. I don't think the city's done their due diligence in looking for personnel for the fire department to fill these holes. My personal opinion. And lastly, I am appalled at the conduct of a couple of people on this council um regarding the recent dismissal of charges against a local citizen who was accused of vandalizing the mayor's property. Um, I've, can I just? Just three, three sentences. Nope, you know, the, the mayor is the chairman, and, and I will respect his. Oh, I can't tell you that I was going to respect your decision? Fine, so.
Is my five minutes started or not?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, I'd just like to address uh, uh, the comments tonight about, uh, from Mr. Jelly about our finances. Um, three months ago, four months ago, five months ago, six months ago, I wish I would have brought the clippings tonight, but I will the next meeting. Okay? State's social media newspaper articles. The Skelly administration has saved the city of Augsburg from bankruptcy. True. Yep, yep, Steve, true. But now we're going to be 1.2, 1.4 million dollars deficit. And you made the statement, we're out of money. So I don't think you really saved this community. Okay? You tore it apart. It is with great interest that the city manager's comments on Channel 7 News tonight uh concerning the possibility of the police resolution passing for two more officers, and I will quote him, "He will not take action even if the resolution passes." If this happens, will you terminate him for insubordination? Do you have the backbone and the nerve to do that? It is with great interest that we're going to appoint Mr. Jelly as fire chief tonight. As Ms. Sovey said, he has two votes and no confidence by the staff. You're going to appoint someone who tore that fire department apart, per your order too. As he said, he threw all the grenades for it. He doesn't live in this community. Doesn't pay taxes in this community. He never wanted to be part of our community. He never works by guns a week. Okay? I'm talking to city manager. Okay? And it's with great interest. I want that on record, please. All right?
Is there anyone else wanting to speak? Is there anyone standing in the booth? Order, please.
Can I ask a question?
No.
The first individual is registered as Stevie Stockboy. Person does not have an audio connection that appears to me. Ignore, understood, ma'am. I do not see any other hands raised, ma'am.
Technically, you cannot direct a city employee to perform any task. You don't, you don't have the capabilities to direct that.
You're directing the city manager to direct the police chief? By charter? You cite what aspect of the charter you're going to do that under?
This is my meeting.
As chair of the meeting? You're going to remove the citizens of the open, through open? I'm asking a question.
If you just heard what I said.
Okay, okay, Mike. I'll do that. Not. This is a meeting where, where, where you're directing the city manager to tell.
Anyone else happy?
No, sir.
So, um, can this bring us to correspondence? Do we have it?
We do not.
No other public, nobody on?
Now we have our consent agenda. Next, we have our claims renewed rating. General fund warrant number 10-2022, the amount of $714,000, $358.10. Library warrant number 2022, the amount of $0. Capital fund warrant number 10-2022, the amount of $646,000, $847.20. And community development warrant number 10-2022, the amount of $75,98. And community renewal warrant number 20-2022, the amount of $0. As audited, be the same by eight.
I'll second it.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Riche?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
So, point of order, ma'am. Uh, you know, I sent in a resolution. Pulled by the city manager. Items of action. And I think it should be placed under items of action.
Let me, uh, right now I have a motion to make an executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
For what? What are we citing as the reason?
Medical, financial, credit, it's all the usual stuff.
It's not on the agenda.
At the end of the meeting.
Do we need a majority vote to move any new business that's not on the agenda?
I, I missed the second, ma'am. I don't know who issued the second. Thank you. Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Uh, yes.
Councillor Kennedy? No. Councillor Powers?
No.
Councillor Riche?
No.
Councillor Scamperley?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Denied.
So, back to where I was. As a point of order, I did submit a resolution to be put on action items.
Mayor, point of order, the agenda has a stipulated process in there. It's, it's got items, he's trying to skip over the agenda.
No, I'm trying to add to the.
There, there are items on there for action that need to be dealt with first.
So, on the agenda, what I'm saying is there's a mistake. Because I submitted
It's no mistake, ma'am.
A resolution on time, and it was intentionally pulled by the city manager.
It's right there.
So, Mayor, Roberts, Roberts Rules of Order, I can, I can call this uh, this point of order and have a discussion about where things lie on the agenda.
Point of order, ma'am, we don't have Roberts rules in this.
We do have. Yeah, we do have, we most certainly do. We most certainly do. It's in the charter.
Right in the charter.
Yes, it is.
Is, is illegal section of the charter doesn't belong there?
It's an illegal section of the charter. Can I see attorney opinion?
Absolutely. Certain, we've discussed.
Right, right now, please.
You discussed, we discussed it before.
We don't, we don't have an attorney's opinion. So, um, here we are, and I submitted a resolution, and I'd like to, I'd like to talk about that resolution. Why not?
It's not in this in the order.
Well, it should be. It should be.
As far, as far as I'm concerned, any councillor can submit a resolution, it goes on the agenda for consideration, and that means that it only needs four votes.
Thank you.
Those have always been the rules, and there was, you know, so it should be on the agenda. It is on the agenda, and it is legitimate, and it only takes four votes. That's my opinion.
Mayor, again, point of order, Councillor Scamperley, longest-serving member of council should know these rules. It's on the agenda, it's been public notice. If the resolution is acted upon tonight, it will only take four votes, it doesn't require five. It is, it is posted under items for discussion because the city staff, legal, budget, and admin did not have proper time to review it and advised council that likely the resolution is in similar violation to a resolution that Councillor Scamperley boasted about the police winning an arbitration when city council gave a direction. So it's under items for discussion for a reason.
Do I have the right agenda?
But it does.
He's talking about an executive session as a goal for item for council action, and you're saying it's on mine, says it's under new business, and I don't see anything for executive session on, on the agenda for items for council action, which he claims is on his agenda.
Why don't we follow on?
If we, if we followed the agenda, we'd be on the right track.
Right, but I'm trying to figure out how we got.
That's my point.
Executive session.
The executive session was called for the first item on the item from a council's action. That's what the executive.
But it's not on me.
It doesn't need to be. He's calling for an executive session.
Well, it's denied, so.
Right. So, so, so topic number one withdrawn, Mayor.
The fact, what, I guess my question would be, was Councillor Scamperley's resolutions provided in a timely manner last week to be put on items for council action? Correct. Thank you, Mike. Uh, the deadline according to the charter is.
Mayor, again, point of order.
To question, and I'm directing the city manager to answer.
Point of order.
I will read the first item of business.
First item withdrawn, Mayor.
Well, the mayor would have to withdraw because he's a point of origin, correct? Technically, or can you withdraw that for him?
I would not. So, my next item of business will be read by City Clerk Kathy Jack.
This is the resolution to establish the standard workdays for elected and appointed city of Augsburg officials and reports the day's work to the New York State and local retirement system. Would you want me to read them?
I'll move that. Second.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm gonna vote against it since, uh, those hours are ridiculous from my experience with the two and a half years.
Can somebody please explain it to Dillaba?
You can deny it. The retirement system acknowledges.
It's, I, I believe this is like a New York State retirement house cleaning of the right.
Right, it's.
What happens is, any elected official order could be in, to a board can have, after the first three months, you submit to the state the hours that the state permits, and they get.
As a part-time employee.
Added to it, yes.
You are correct, Councillor.
It's, it's basically just a rubber stamp.
You are correct, sir.
I think we need a second. Do we have a second?
Yes, yes.
Do we have a second?
What is it?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
I know.
Councillor Dillaba?
Hang on a sec.
Mayor, can we get order in the room, please?
Councillor Dillaba?
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Steven Jelly. Resolution requesting the assistance of the St. Lawrence County Sheriff's Department with providing primary law enforcement services to the city. Whereas the city of Augsburg has been working arduously to financially recover for several years after seeking assistance from the New York State Financial Restructure Board, and whereas the Financial Restructure Board made several recommendations to the city to improve its financial position, of which Augsburg City Councils were tirelessly to implement. Whereas even after implementing many of the FRB recommendations, the city of Augsburg 2022 budget does not allow for adequate resources to effectively and adequately provide sole law enforcement services to the city. And whereas Augsburg city taxpayers are already paying for the services provided by the St. Lawrence County Sheriff's Department as a portion of their county taxes, now therefore be it resolved, that in an effort to provide effective and adequate law enforcement services to the city of Augsburg, assistance from the St. Lawrence County Sheriff's Department with providing primary law enforcement services to the city is crucial. Be it further resolved, the city manager will request the assistance of the St. Lawrence County Sheriff's Department to provide primary law enforcement services to the city, and shall provide regular updates to council on the progress of implementing this plan. Be it further resolved, the copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators.
I'll introduce this. Second.
Yeah. What's this? Yeah, I'll second it. We're just one for action, right?
Yeah, so, um, if you, if the community cannot afford, um, an adequate police department, then this is a good measure to get the help that they need, that our community needs. So.
I just, I don't understand, um, is the word primary some sort of a legal, or is it used in law enforcement? I mean, does that mean that this, our police force is secondary? I don't understand the word, that's all.
It means, Councillor Reisch, as we've discussed tonight, we, we don't have adequate resources on the street right now in the city. We need to ask the sheriff and the state police to be engaged on a more regular basis with some dedicated resources to the city to help provide this. The city taxpayers do pay for this service three times. That's the truth. The biggest law enforcement agency, obviously, is the New York State Police. The second is the Sheriff's Department. You pay taxes to all three. We need to ensure that we're getting all that we can get from there as we are trying to put together the resources. The city of Augsburg cannot maintain the level of law enforcement services on our own that, that has been commonplace over the last several decades. It's not, it can't occur. Uh, we, we have to have some assistance. We've gotta look at other ways of doing business. Again, I, it, it doesn't matter to me who stands up here and tries to swizzle the numbers back and forth because it doesn't matter who spoke numbers tonight. The numbers at the end of the day aren't adding up. The expenses continue to climb greater than the city is taking in revenue, and it's, well, nobody wants less police officers, Mayor, please. This, nobody wants less police on the street. I, I. I'm prepared at this point to, to direct the chief to, to have three people on minimum staffing to ensure officer safety and appropriate level of response, but we're gonna do that through overtime. We don't have the resources to keep people, three people on the street. So what do we consider safe? What do we want the police department to do, or discussions that this council owes the chief? Uh, but in the meantime, I think there's nothing wrong with us going to the sheriff and going to the state police and telling them we, we need support.
I, I, I understand the resolution, I just don't understand the word primary. I didn't know if it had some sort.
No, it was not waiting to be called for backup, Councillor. We need to see frequent state police patrols in Augsburg. We need to see sheriff's resources dedicated here with some level of frequency. We, we need support.
What conversations have we had with, with the state police barracks and, and the county sheriff related to this resolution before? I mean, I, I don't, surely don't want to send one over there and have them say, well, we've had no communications with you. We don't know how we're gonna implement this because we're dealing with the same crisis you're dealing with.
Yeah. I had discussions with both. I need a formal request from council to ask them for formal assistance. I mean, I, I don't know what, uh.
From what I gather, they, they don't have the resources to do it. One of the conversations I've had.
Okay, well, we're gonna ask officially, Councillor. That's what we need to do. Just, I just wanna be able to ask them for, for, for support.
All right.
At the previous, after the previous city council meeting, there was a, uh, there was a drug bust, uh, on the other side of town. Uh, the, the two on-duty Augsburg police officers fully engaged, and within several minutes, uh, three to four state police patrols arrived to provide backup to that. And that, that's great. If they have those resources on duty, we, we need more support. I don't, I don't know how this could be an argument topic either. Do we believe that only cars that say Augsburg Police Department can primarily patrol our streets? Is that, is that the latest thing we believe?
No, I don't think that's the case, but I think we're getting, we're getting those resources from them. I mean, they, 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 they responded to Spring Street, to the, to the incident on Spring Street. And the, I believe we had the Border Patrol there.
We're already getting them. They respond when we call.
So we're already getting these services.
No, we're not.
Is, uh, really, is, if you think of all your county taxes, what, what are you getting for services here?
What are we getting for taxes here?
No, I'm, well, I, I, I've got water, I've got sewer, you made sure I got that $50 million plan.
Not getting the services and the safety that we need.
I, I.
That's why we're.
I know, but they don't have it either. That's the concern here. The conversations I've had with sheriff's offices, they're, they're, they can't, and I'll use the word primary. I mean, it's almost as if we're directing them. When we have a call, you need to drop everything and come on over to Augsburg.
We need more support, we can, we pay for it, Councillor. What's, what's the difference? What's the difference if you pay county taxes in Colton and get their services primarily? If you pay taxes here, what's the difference?
It's taxation, man.
It is taxation, but what's the difference if we pay for it? Why aren't we getting it? And I'm not saying it is not providing.
What assurances are we gonna get from this?
Don't, don't know. We're gonna ask.
We've been waiting for assurances on 911 for two years, and they've been saying it's happening, it's happening, we're moving it, we're moving it along. They haven't moved anything along.
As far as 911 what? Oh, calling 911.
Yes, and we're still, a lot of times, it's just a dividend.
We're sending these resolutions over and not getting anything done because they don't have it either.
We have to ask.
Well, we have a lot of resources.
Is the word additional?
All aspects of law enforcement, I'm sorry.
Is the word additional, uh, a better word to use? Uh, yeah.
Sir, I don't think there's any.
I would make a motion on this, just to take the words primary out and put additional. Um, I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Steve.
Thank you.
So to omit primary and add additional?
Take primary and add additional. I think all the help is.
I think we get it. The law enforcement, Steve, you know the drill, man. They don't deny.
Forever, we didn't want them here.
You don't get, you don't get your six.
We didn't want them.
They watch your six as much as they can.
Well, I'm telling you, they, they can be here. They're, they're, they're right here anyway. But we should get more services out of state and county.
Listen, I'll support it. I don't have a problem supporting it. They're only gonna do what they can do right now, which they're doing right now. We, we're the city of Augsburg. We need the resources right here in the city. I've always been of that opinion.
You're also St. Lawrence County, and you're New York State.
I'm talking here. I'm talking here. So I, I understand your position. I've heard it countless times here with money, this, that, and the other thing. But I'm always gonna support public safety.
Of course you are.
You know this. So that's my position.
Who is not supporting public safety?
No, no, well, who's not? True. Good point. I'm, I'm not suggesting nobody here does it. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we're the city of Augsburg. Resources belong here. The man needs the services. Let's give it to him.
Let's find the.
We've got some additional num, we've got numbers, we've got sales tax that is gonna be coming in. City of Augsburg, I mean, the comptroller from January to the end of April, I mean, 200, an additional 282,000, am I correct?
But it's last year's first three months.
No, it's 2021, which they omitted. It's 2022, right here, from January to April.
As I said in the briefing, we're running, we're running just a little ahead on, on sales tax, not a lot.
Like I said, I'll support it, but I, I, I don't, I don't see how there, I don't see how any additional resources. We need the help right here. We're the city, we're the only city in the county, not in favor of a town or a village. We take care of our own first, and we'll always have support from the state police, the sheriffs, Border Patrol, and anybody else that can assist when the call comes out. They always have. They always have. With what resources they have?
Kathy, on the amendment, can you call the roll?
This is a motion to amend. Councillor Kennedy?
Uh, yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
So the second part of that is, uh, the city shall provide regular updates to council. Oh, okay, I see. I thought it was the other agencies. So there's two primaries. Have both of those primaries?
Yeah, they were both changed, substituted for additional.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
This is the resolution as amended. Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
No, I think we already get the services as it is. Approved.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a change.
No, we already get the service. They're coming no matter what.
Right.
With whatever they've got. Nobody's going to leave someone behind because there's not a resolution put in front of them. They all took a no.
For, for clarification, we're not, we're not saying that nobody comes for backup. This is, this is making up, making up the talk instead of listening to what's being said. What we're saying is we're asking the agencies to help provide a additional level of support, perhaps one of them having a patrol on the city streets all the time, so we have three patrols instead of two. Imagine the shock and awe in the room. That, that's what we're asking for. We're, we're asking for the additional help. And, and so, until the city can figure out, until the city council can figure out how we're gonna pay for additional resources.
You don't need to address me like that. Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business will be read by City Manager Steven Jelly.
Mayor, modify this resolution, uh, to save the amendment the same two, this is the exact same resolution as the previous, only, so we'll, uh, amend the two words, uh, primary to additional as well.
I'll, I'll introduce this.
I'll make a motion. Oh, you gotta introduce it first. I'll, I'll second it. And I'll make a motion to, to make the amendment, uh, with primary with additional.
Well, here.
I, I made it before, technically made it now, so you don't have to amend.
Okay, Kathy, would you please call the roll? Okay, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
It's gotta go through, it's gotta go through a vote, doesn't it?
Yeah.
As, as it's written.
Yeah, it has to go through a vote. It's on the agenda that way, so I, I'll make that motion to amend.
I'll second.
Kathy, can you call the roll on the amendment?
This would be to amend. Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Delaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved. And as amended, mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Delaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by director of planning and development, Andrew Smith.
Good evening, mayor and councils. The resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with environmental design and research, E D R, following the request for qualifications, number two zero two two dash zero zero three. Whereas the city of Augsburg solicited qualifications for engineering professionals to provide engineering services in accordance with the contract agreement for Northern Border Regional Commission, N B R C project number N B R C two one G N Y dash zero two, for improvements at the city's main street pump station. And whereas E D R and Barton and Le Judas provided responses to the city's request for qualifications, all of which were reviewed and evaluated by city staff. And whereas E D R Syracuse, New York has proven their capacity and ability to perform the work to the city's satisfaction, now therefore be it resolved that the city manager or his designee is authorized to enter into a contract with E D R for services associated with the improvements to the city's main street pump station. Be it further resolved that these expenses for the project will be charged to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, account numbers A eight zero two zero point five one five, and N B R C project number N B R C two one G N Y dash zero two.
I'll move that.
How much will we still, even after the grants?
The project is estimated at one point eight million dollars, and there is, um, we're looking at, I, I believe, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is the city's outstanding match, if no additional funds are received.
Just six hundred thousand is done?
Six hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
So I understand you went out for R F Q, and I think the last meeting, we approved E D R. Was that the last meeting, or have we not done that yet?
That's the resolution before you.
Okay, so there wasn't one before that, okay. So I just don't understand what contract we are approving and what the dollar amount is.
There is no, so this will allow the city manager to enter into a contract with E D R. They will be doing the design services for the main street pump station. Um, the, based on the one point eight million dollar project, the engineering costs in the N B R C project budget are estimated at a hundred and five thousand dollars, but in accordance with the request for qualifications, there is no lump sum price that either firm was required to provide. It's an award based simply on qualifications.
And I'd like to see him, now that they were chosen as, as the preferred contractor, to provide us with the contract for council to consider and approve that has a dollar value in it. So I, I just don't wanna approve something without understanding, you know, whether it's twenty thousand in services, since they are, I think they already designed the whole thing.
E D R has not, as a firm, done any design.
It's dank.
Um, G H D received, did most of the design work when the project was designed as an alternate to the city's capital project.
And do they?
The design work was initially started by, um, by C two A E before it was given. So this is now like the third engineering firm. E D R has not done design work.
So are they going to use the designs that we already have? For the project?
I can't speak to that, but based on their response that was provided to the council in whole, um, they did provide what we believe to be the best proposal to do the design work. They're familiar with the city's wastewater system, having done the design work on the capital project, working with, uh, G H D and previous engineering firms. So based on that, um, our previous experience as well as their response is the basis of the recommendation to proceed with an award to E D R. There has been no award at this point in time.
Yeah, I understand that they are the preferred, and I'm fine with that. I just don't wanna vote on giving someone the authority to sign a contract without understanding what the contract is and the dollar value of it.
Engineering firms are like a time material basis, you know? They come in, they take a period, usually they're gonna go by a percentage of the final price of the project.
Well, if we don't provide any oversight, they can put any number in there, so that's, I, I.
Well, we, we, we have an overall project estimate cost, council, right out.
One point eight.
At one point eight, I mean, right. So I mean, that, that includes the engineering as well as the, is the activity, so we're gonna, and the reason we did R F Q obviously was we, we wanted to, to ascertain the qualifications, and obviously E D R has done a lot of work, uh, in the city, familiar with our, our projects, so the, the cost containment will be within the project estimate. If we were to exceed that, we certainly would be back to council.
Sure chance of getting it.
It's not just oversight, though, right? It's, it's the whole package of things.
It's construction oversight and design.
Right, and design, yeah. I, I can't vote for it without seeing a contract and knowing what the cost is. I, I just think that's the better way to do it.
I don't think anyone's gonna give you a price for designing because they have to get in there and have to do so much work to know what they're getting into. They're not gonna commit themselves to doing that for nothing.
Yeah, we've approved contracts like that already.
Well, we know it's one point eight and six hundred and eighty-five we're gonna pay, so we're not gonna pay any more than six eighty-five.
That's our share. The, the engineering line for this project is a hundred and five thousand.
I mean, if they had a contract for a hundred and five thousand, at least I would understand. But, but I might question it and say, it's kinda already been designed, why do you need a hundred and five thousand? So, have we?
The other company owns the rights to those designs that they did, because they're different companies, and they're not gonna.
All of our contracts, when somebody does work for us, should specify in there that that's ours, it's the people of Augsburg's.
Except, except we, we didn't, we never accepted that work, we never paid for it, we never accepted it. And we, and we separated the project, and, and specifically to be able to apply for the N B R C grant, the project could not be tied at all to the current project that was not competed, uh, within the rules of federal procurement.
But it was designed, and there are documents, so we paid for it.
And I don't, I don't, excuse me, I don't think the detailed documents, uh, were, were done, council, because that, that work was never freed. It was an optional, uh, item on the, um, on the bids, uh, package that didn't go through.
So we've submitted a detail.
Yeah, and again, the, the costs right now are not to exceed a hundred and five. That's our, that's our estimate in the budget. If the costs were gonna be above what is in the project estimate, we, we would certainly have to be trying to figure out if something else was gonna cost us less to maintain the project budget, so we're not, we're not gonna exceed the budget of a hundred and five thousand. Or, or, and we're gonna, and now again, if it does, and the project is like any of these other projects, that the bids are coming back, and this, of course, needs to get us there. We've got a construction estimate of one point eight million or a project estimate. We, it might be more than that, and we'll certainly have to come back to council. We've got a one million dollar grant for this, which is great, but again, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, we, right now, we've gotta foot the bill for that. If, if that bill climbs much higher than that.
We have to go about to bid for it, too.
Oh, we do.
And, and the price.
That's what I'm saying. If, if, if we get this design done and we get to bid and the cost is two million dollars, I've gotta come back to you, because we run out of money quickly to pay for this.
Yeah. Kind of costs, costs of materials and labor and everything's going up, right?
Well, it has to, we lose the pump station.
Well, I mean, that pump station's catastrophic if we lose. I mean, I don't think, I mean, the council's approved to move forward with the, the project. I don't think that's been the issue. I just, I think now we're, you know, our plan is to stay within the, the engineer budget. If any costs start to escalate in this, we're gonna have to come to council. Or look, again, I'm, again, the one million dollar grant was good, but again, uh, six hundred and eighty-five thousand is, is a lot. We'll be, we'll be using a lot of money out of a, out of the sewer fund balance to pay for that. We, we can't go a lot higher than that.
Did the, did the, um, and forgive me if you already mentioned this, Andrea, um, were there any other requests, R F Q sent out to any other designing groups?
Oh, yeah, we specifically sent the, well, we posted it online, but in order to comply with M W B E requirements, which E D R is a certified women-owned business, uh, we had to email it directly to, um, qualified engineering firms that are listed on the New York State directory. So this, in addition to being publicly listed and advertised as being publicly available, um, it was also emailed directly as a solicitation to a number of qualified, um, M or W B E certified firms in the North Country region.
Do we have those numbers of what they, those bids came back in? Request for qualifications?
We received only two responses.
Just two, from E D R and what was the other one?
Barton and Le Judas.
Right. E D R being the cheaper, I'm assuming?
There's no, we did not, a request for qualifications does not contain pricing information. It is.
Just based on their ability to design the, right, alright.
And to com, and to comply with the requirements of the grant, um, which includes the budget.
And they've worked already closely with the project at hand.
They helped, I mean, they had a leg up, for sure. They've worked, again, on our, on our capital wastewater treatment plant project. They provided the engineering, um, background that was required to submit for the N B R C grant. So they're very familiar with the project and the city's needs. But we could not do a sole solicitation. Um, you may recall that being, um, initial, an initial challenge, uh, with this grant, uh, the funder would not allow a sole source procurement contract. Uh, so we did have to go through the full R F Q and solicitation process, so this is the end result. Two responses, one from Barton and Le Judas, one from E D R.
Even though it was already designed and everything?
We do not own the designs. I, I do not have these designs that you speak of. I don't know how else to tell you that. I do not have them, we do not have them. There is no firm that has these designs. E D R may have an upper hand at preparing them, but there, there are no designs that exist that are the city's.
Because I remember there was a resolution to go ahead with that project, and my understanding is it was all designed as well as the other, other facilities.
We had them as alternate, uh.
Alternates, yeah. I mean, so there were bid documents, right?
We just had them as alternate items that were not, they were not awarded. And, and again, as Andrea said, we didn't, since we didn't, we didn't have, pay for any of that work or have that work, we don't, we don't have those products. And again, I, even if we did, the reality is, we, the N B R C federal procurement grant says that every, everything has to go through their approved process. And, and because we, we didn't compete that project.
The only reason why I asked was to say, isn't that just like the federal grant? That's the only reason I asked.
You know what, well, it is, but, but we, we got a million dollar federal grant, so we've gotta comply with federal regulations.
Just one, one more quick question. Uh, when all the lift stations were included in the original construction of the wastewater, was it voted down to save?
Yep, it's five million.
It was?
It's February. And you picked up a million off the first grant?
With, with the rise of costs and labor, are we gonna be saving any money, you know, ultimately?
I know. State's responsible for one.
I, 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 I'd, I'd like to see the numbers myself.
That's a bit of a moot point, to be fair. Um, we didn't choose to go forward with those at the time. Um, this is a critical piece of infrastructure. It manages, it manages and handles the entire west side of the city. If there's a catastrophic failure, that means the west side of the city doesn't have a place.
Everybody's in favor of it, we're just, we're just wondering about the process, that's all.
So once we agree on a design?
I believe I've answered your questions, everyone.
No, no, I'm just, once we, once we agree on a design, who owns it? Ultimately, we will, right?
I mean, ultimately, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna design this. I mean, at the ultimate stage, to get a bid package to go out for the ultimate bid of the project, and if, again, if the bids come back, you know, significantly higher than the money we have, we're, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out how we, how we fund it. As of right now, I mean, how we would fund this, as we've got a million dollar grant, that six eighty-five would be coming out of the sewer, the sewer fund balance. Um, you know, it, it may be worth, as we're, we're going through the, the grant process now, to, uh, look at it, but the reality is, it could delay the project another year to wait to go through grant funding again. And again, of all the pump stations that we've talked about upgrading, this, again, is the most critical one, and it's the one that's in the worst shape, so we're, we're, we're sort of on borrowed, borrowed time, probably. And as we're looking, you know, obviously at the growth, uh, that, that side of the city, uh, we've, we need to, need to move on this.
So is it, as an alternate, you said?
No, it was an alternate.
Was an alternate.
Counselor Scampereley?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Delaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Uh, no.
Approved.
And that brings us to old business, and we will begin with director of planning and development, Andrew Smith.
Thought I'd money, take a deep breath before I came back up. Um, so Maple City Rail Trail is a project that, uh, the city manager mentioned earlier in the meeting, and it has two federal Department of Transportation grant awards, um, that were awarded in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, as well as an E S D grant that was awarded, uh, to offset city matching funds. Um, this project has been ongoing for a number of years and, um, took a little bit of a pause as in many of our projects in twenty twenty, uh, due to COVID, and it's finally gaining ground again. The project is fully completed from a design perspective, um, and, uh, we have just finished negotiations with regard to the two private property owners, being the cemetery owned by Saint Mary's Cathedral and the property owned by Nahal Kaduman LLC. Those are both on State Route eight twelve, approximately across, uh, from the airport. Um, the details of those negotiations, um, the, the easement that's necessary from the church is at no cost to, to the city. And the final agreement with the LLC is for an acquisition versus a permanent easement, and the negotiated cost, which is a grant, uh, eligible expense, is twelve hundred, twelve thousand five hundred dollars per acre. And the details of that, um, are being finalized through the federal aid process, uh, right now through the D O T real estate office and the city attorney. Um, I am waiting for an update from Fisher Associates, who is the city's engineer, uh, on that project, on what is the next step between, uh, completing the real estate transaction and putting the project out to bid. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with that project, but it is a great project to have back up and going. It will, it will complete a loop on the Maple City Trail, which presently dead ends at the former Oswego Valley Railroad Bridge. Um, it will bring the trail through essentially the, um, the edge of the cemetery and the agricultural lands out to State Route tw- eight twelve. Um, you'll be able to go north on what will become State Street, back down on the sidewalk network to the Debisky Center, or south on eight twelve, which is a designated bike route. Um, it will complete a four and a half mile loop, and it will also improve, uh, and stabilize the stone piers of the railroad bridge.
And, um, I, I assume we'd have resolutions since we're acquiring property or entering into, uh, an easement and everything for council to approve?
Any of those would come to you when they're prepared by, uh, D O T?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Very excited.
Do we have a sales tax update?
I just, uh, as everyone knows, the, um, the bill to pass the home rule legislation for, um, fifty percent of the last one cent is passed the Senate and the Assembly. We're just waiting for the governor's signature on the bill. We'll advise council when that occurs. Excuse me, um, week before last, the, uh, hearing, uh, took place at the, uh, third departments on the county's appeal to our charter change. Um, it's about seventy minutes. I feel like the city, you know, provided, uh, a better argument, a more adequate argument. Now, the county is taking the unusual step of providing a post, uh, brief to the court, um, to try to correct three or four, uh, errors that they made in their, in their testimony, so, um, the court's, uh, third department session ends at the end of this month, so I believe we'll have a decision on that, uh, any, any day. It'll, it'll happen before the end of the month. I doubt they'll go out of session and leave, uh, a case like this unresolved, so we should, uh, know the, uh, status of that sales tax, um, uh, case from the third department. We completed all of our testing, uh, in accordance with the state department of health requirements, uh, eight weeks of testing, uh, five days post, uh, significant storm. Everything has been submitted, or actually, we're waiting just for the last, we got the verbal on the test, uh, was, the last test was good, we're just waiting for the written, uh, results of the test should be here any day. Everything will go to the department of health, I hope, before the end of the week, and, um, we'll have a decision, uh, soon, uh, whether we can open the beach or not for, uh, Fourth of July weekend.
Awesome. We have plenty of lifeguards, we're all staffed and ready to roll.
I'm doing, doing better than we were last year, and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, um, we'll provide a plan at council once we know we can do it, but I, I guess we'll have adequate. I provide council list, um, this week, we've, um, as I detailed in the last meeting, we've, uh, you know, received over four hundred applications in the first round, to give some of that to you. Uh, we've, we broke the projects down based on criticality of need within the income demographics. Uh, so I'll provide council a list of the, uh, the first set of projects that we're doing the second level, um, due diligence, just making sure the financials are all in order and people have their projects in place. Um, I hope sometime this week, perhaps even to be giving approvals on those first, uh, those first projects. And as we do those, uh, we'll, can provide a list, just like we did with the business, uh, to the council, so you can see where the, where the money's going and who's getting funded.
Um, does anyone else have any old business?
Any progress on two twelve Ford Street?
Yes, sir, it's a topic I've got in executive session. We've got a, an offer we will discuss.
And, uh, thanks for writing the letter, asking for additional grants for the wastewater treatment plant. And, yeah, there are new federal dollars out there, and it can be used for debt reduction, so having the meeting and going through with that might be beneficial. I hope so. So I think R E D C competition, um, those are due July thirty-first, so I just curious what, uh, what we got in the works at this point in time.
We'll have a laydown at the next meeting of all the grants, just like we did last year, that we, um, we've got on the docket, and we'll let, let council decide after something they wanna add to the list or take off that we're, we're putting down.
And the hydro plant owners, uh, we talked about that before, um, you know, I think you already gave us some information, how far past due they were, what kind of action we could take. I'm just curious about that. I had one more. Can't think of it.
This brings us to new business, and we'll start with, uh, city manager, Dean Jolly.
Mayor, is there anybody else for old business? Is there anybody else for old business?
I, I, I'm only John. I did old business.
Oh, now that you bring it up, S R O?
Yes, sir.
Where are we with it?
Um, Mark training in August.
Yes, we'll have, uh, two officers fully training, uh, by the end of August for the upcoming school year.
Wonderful, thank you.
So this brings us to new business, and I'll start with, uh, police department staffing. Uh, Chief Kearns has, uh, written a grant. I was asked to do a support letter for, um, I think it would be, uh, a mistake to jump ahead and hire police to go and all, if we can have them painful. So that's my thoughts on, uh, police staffing is, if, if Chief Kearns's grant is, uh, successful.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, point order, we have a resolution under new business, I believe it says, police, police department staffing, and, and we could, we could have that in discussion with the resolution? Okay, that's nice.
So, uh, anyhow, uh, I, uh, I think it was approved for the city to, in our financial situation, to, uh, see if, uh, Chief Kearns's grant, uh, will come through. And, uh, now I believe, uh, we have, uh.
Just.
Just trying to understand the grant better. Um, so. How much? How many officers? How long does it last for? Was it submitted? This is first I heard of it.
I've actually mentioned the cops grant in my last two updates. Um, what the details of the grant are is. You can apply for up to twenty percent of your current staff. So twenty percent of nineteen is like four point one position. So. That's what I applied for. Um, they'll pay for up to. They will pay seventy-five percent of their salaries for three years for, for each position at a maximum salary of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per position. And that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Through the totality of the grant. So, um. We're looking at a half million dollar grant, uh, where the city would be paying a, a quarter of these officer salaries for the three years. City would also be responsible for the, um, you know, fr- fringe on top of the salaries.
When do you, what debate? One of those awards typically?
Uh, we're expecting in the fall to have an announcement.
Same way with the, the fire department ones.
It's a federal grant?
Yes, it is. It's through our Department of Justice.
And have we asked for letters of support and everything from our?
I have, I have a layer, a letter of support from, uh, the mayor, um. Congresswoman Stefanic, Senator Ritchie and Assemblyman Walzick. And Senator Schumer's office, uh, will be providing one directly to the Department of Justice.
And Jellabran, might as well get all.
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't have any contacts for that office. So if by all means, if council can assist with that, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, maybe the first thing they're gonna do is ask for copies of the grants and everything.
Absolutely. I can provide that. I can, um, provide that all to the city manager.
Maybe even get the sheriff on board?
I would hope so.
Why the sheriff, maybe even the troop B major or, you know, even a letter, even a letter to the, uh, superintendent of the state police, Kevin Bruin.
With a letter of support, you're saying?
Yeah, a letter of supports.
Absolutely. I can reach out.
Happy to work with you on that.
And thank you.
Thank you.
So I had a resolution and, uh. So first of all, it was under new business. I'm not sure why it was put there. If it even is, or if it was just submitted, I'm not sure. Uh, but. Uh, so there's several issues here, of course, and at the last meeting, uh. The city manager asked for direction as to where we would get the money to hire new police because obviously. We got a crime issue, same, same talking points tonight, even more tonight than there was at the last meeting. And so this resolution, uh, addresses that, uh, to, uh. Hire two police officer and taking the money from the fund balance. Uh, I'd like to note, okay, that it's not a directive. What it is, is if you look at the now therefore being resolved, Augsburg City Council supports and desires. The city manager to transfer approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars if needed. From the city's fund balance for the purpose of hiring, supplying uniforms, equipment, training, et cetera, if necessary. Of two police officers for the city's police force at police chiefs early as possible and practical convenience. And the council desires the police department's narcotics detective's position to be reinstated. At the earliest possible moment. Okay? And so, uh. There was two points sent out in an email by Mr. Jelly, okay, uh, the city manager. And the one point was that it was not handed in on time. And so my worry was. That putting it under new business was going to be, uh, potentially require five votes as if it came from the floor. Okay, so that's good. I, I think, you know, everybody should accept four, but, uh, I think regarding these, not only the resolution desiring this to happen. Uh. Uh, is everybody in agreement that it's not a directive? And, and the first issue actually is when is the deadline?
It's insane. The deadline comes down to where the charter says where it will be reviewed, make sure the form is correct, um, adequate time for the, the clerk. Um, Wednesday for an agenda that goes out on Thursday or Friday is a little crunching.
So A R seventeen says by noon on Thursday, period. I mean, that's, that's, that's very clear and that's always been, you know, as Mr. Jelly pointed out, uh, I've been on council for thirteen years here and. Thursday deadline, if you want something on there, that's plenty of time to get it reviewed. And so. Because the charter states that, that's what we go by.
Well, you're gonna always have situations where that may arise that on Wednesday or Thursday, and maybe it can't be reviewed. So you, it's, it's not, it's not a, a given. There's, the, the charter's there and yes, the words. I'll, I'll give you that. They're probably there. Um, but it doesn't mean that it's, it's cut in stone. There's.
No, it does.
No, it's not. No.
Yes, it does. That's.
She can't get it done. How are you gonna do it?
I, I believe she had it written up because I wrote it up actually.
He's suggesting, he's suggesting where it comes from. It's not that it, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. It's gonna be coming from the fund. And, you know, it's.
So I've never had this issue before. Well.
What, what of Counsel Reese's community development plan? He's asked to have that on, he's told me he's asked to have that on his, the agenda numerous times for, for action.
I think we got an agenda and we've got a resolution. Counsel Reese's resolution.
I'm curious why it was, it was submitted in a timely fashion. I guess that's my concern. And this is what I'm hearing. So the, I mean, is this governing by fiat? What, what is this? I mean.
Are we making accusations or are we?
I'm asking a question. It's pretty relevant. What I, it's pretty obvious what I'm saying up here. I'm, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. I'm asking questions. Because all these people and many more ask me these questions. So, so I, it's my obligation to ask those questions.
So very, very simply, excuse me, we, we meet the, we meet the deadline all the time when resolutions are sent in. This resolution required a significant amount of staff work that nobody would have time to put together. The, the budget figures in here are not accurate. This isn't what it would cost for this year. Excuse me. I think the council, again, from my perspective, needs to debate the bigger picture of what are we going to do for the police department staffing? But let's just take all this aside. The heading to the resolution said a resolution to hire for firefighters. That's, that's what the resolution said. That, that automatically would violate the same tenant that we learned last year. So I'm simply trying to bring the council's attention. There's, there's a right way to do this. We shouldn't write in a, you can't write in a budget. It doesn't exist. You can't tell me that you desire to modify the twenty twenty-two city. No, it's not my decision. I don't, I, I don't approve the budget.
If council desires and says, we, you can take this money from the budget, then it's up to you to do it or not do it.
No, it's, we need a resolution to modify the twenty twenty budget.
We, well, then.
We need, that's, that's the amendments that we make. We, we do. That's, I'm, I'm saying, oh, so guys.
Should have been put in items for action, okay? And then we make any amendments or retable it to make these modifications. It shouldn't have turned into some big fiasco.
You, you may, so, um, is that, let, let, Mayor, if I will. Well, you called the news. Let's not, you, you called the news. Stop that. You started the news story. You know.
They'll be the first ones to tell you.
And you didn't call the city manager.
Why would I?
Yeah, why wouldn't you call? Why would you call the city manager? So we need a resolution.
Have some order. I'm trying to talk here.
We need a resolution to modify that budget. That's what we need.
Was Dan's resolution introduced? And seconded?
All right. So why don't I introduce it?
So.
Read it into the rep.
Just the short.
Okay.
Part of it, please.
No, read the whole thing.
Resolution. To hire two police officers to address public safety concerns, whereas the city of Augsburg's. Twenty twenty-two budget funds nineteen officers and whereas the city of Augsburg as of May twenty-third. Twenty twenty-two council meeting only has eleven officers for road patrol, two of which are funded by O B P A. Which is causing a tremendous amount of overtime is, is expected to exceed the twenty twenty-two budget amount. And whereas the shortage of staff. Has created enormous amount of unnecessary stress upon the city's police force and illustrates a disregard for officer welfare. And whereas the city manager recently made the decision to eliminate narcotics detective. By moving a position to road patrol for the sake of relieving road patrol and overtime. And whereas some residents of the city. Express concern and disappointment in staffing levels of the police department at the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Noting the city's drug epidemic, number of rapes, shootings and violence. And whereas both of the city's police unions, police benevolent association. And police supervisory unit have publicly opposed this decision and expressed. That the, this decision compromises the safety of the city as a whole and the safety of the Augsburg Police Department staff. And whereas the city of Augsburg has a fund balance of over six point one million dollars incurred in large part by substantial cuts to public safety. From twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. And whereas the hiring of two more patrol officers would cost the city approximately between. Two hundred thousand and two hundred and sixty thousand, depending upon experience and levels of training. And whereas this figure represents. Approximately four point two five percent of the city's general fund balance. And whereas the manager Stephen Jelly stated at May twenty-third, twenty-two, that he wants direction. On how to pay for more officers and he lacked upon it. And whereas the city council believes recent cuts to public safety may compromise the overall public safety and general welfare of the city. And its police officers themselves, whereas city council is concerned for the overall safety of the citizens of Augsburg. And the city's police force. And whereas the Augsburg City Council would like to address. And support the citizens' concerns regarding continuing the services provided by our narcotics unit. Now therefore be it resolved, Augsburg City Council supports and desires. The city manager to transfer approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars if needed. From the city's fund balance to the city's police department for the purpose of hiring, supplying uniforms, equipment and training, et cetera, if necessary. Of two police officers for the city's police force at the police chiefs early as possible and practical convenience. And. Be it further resolved that the Augsburg City Council desires the police department's narcotics detective position. Be reinstated at the earliest possible moment. I so move.
I'll second it.
All right. So we're talking about amendments here, uh, to this resolution. And so the first amendment should be in the title, I guess.
Well, I was, I was gonna make a suggestion. I wasn't, first of all, I wasn't aware of the cops grant. So it's, it's, I understand Mike's point, you know, it's the same with the fire department. We're waiting to hear a federal grant. For the fire department positions and. Uh, you know, I sincerely hope we get it. Otherwise we're gonna be in a bad situation. Um, so. I think it's reasonable at this point in time, you know. Halfway through the year, we don't know what our financial situation is going to be for two thousand twenty-three. We don't know what kind of sales tax revenue we're gonna collect and it's almost impossible to, to estimate it. Because this is the first year when we're preempting and, and it's just money collected in the city and it may be significantly lower. It may be the same. I don't know. So I wanted to amend it for one officer. Um, and that's what I can support. If you're willing to entertain my amendment, that's what I, that's what I would support.
Me personally?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, of course I'm gonna support any officer at, at that. And so.
And then, and then if our, then if our situation's good toward the end of the year and our projections are good, then. You know, these things really should be handled during the budget process, you know, and we did that. Um, so. You know, by October or November, we'll start the budget process for twenty-three and we'll have a better understanding of our financial situation. And the needs of the department and probably find out about the grants as well.
So that being said, uh. I think Mr. Jelly was correct when he said that the numbers aren't quite there. So for the rest of this year, first of all, you only got half a year left. Number one. So you can almost cut those in half. Number two. The amount of money being saved that would, would be saved, that would otherwise be overtime allocation would probably make up for it. And meanwhile, you're gonna have less officer stress and more, more guys on the street, you know, so. I'd still like to support two. I'm not gonna vote against one if the rest of council agrees. It's, it's almost gonna cost us nothing to get the other guy here when you consider the overtime inflation. And if we got the grant that Mayor's Jelly is supporting, uh, we probably will with that kind of support. I, I.
Mark, would you like to come up and speak? Okay.
So the grant as well as a sliding five-year scale, it's not if we get it, uh, you have three years to spend it. So if you did approve one, two, three positions, um. This grant could cover those positions to slide back towards, like say if you give me an August one hire date. We could be reimbursed to that date moving forward. So.
Good.
Again, there's no guarantees on grants, but I just want, I want you to be fully informed.
Well, I think with a collective effort, I, 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 I mean, I know that Counsel Reese, myself and Kennedy and Scampereley worked and I'm not suggesting anybody else didn't, but. We pushed really hard in the state legislature this year to get that home rule and what supported us the most was getting it through. The, uh, having the support from the county. Um, you know, a lot of emails exchanged back and forth. I've had phone calls and text messages and. We pushed hard and that's why I suggest that we reach out to other entities to get letters of support for this, for this grant that would be able to be used. And, and the hiring of bringing two on right now and taking a look at the potential, uh, budget process coming up in October. Um, I would. I also, I'll, I'll give him anything he, that we can get through this council. But I, I think the resolution calls for two and if we can, we put that push on with the grant, I feel confident in our ability to be able to lobby to get that done. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to support him, support it with two right now.
I just like to, everyone to remember, we just lost one point one million dollars because we hadn't paid. Somebody hadn't paid the bills going back to two thousand fourteen.
Well, we don't have that information in front of us yet. We don't have that information, but we have a public safety issue.
So I'd like to make a formal amendment to Dan's resolution and I'll read it. A resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-two adopted city budget to provide funding. To hire one additional police officer, whereas the twenty-two adopted city budget provided funding for nineteen police officers. And whereas there are three officers who are out on disability leave, creating road patrol shortages and increased overtime costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the twenty-two adopted city budget is hereby amended to appropriate up to. Sixty thousand in funding for the police department to hire one additional police officer for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Be it further resolved that funding for this position should come from the city's fund balance and be it further resolved that the city manager is hereby instructed. To expeditionally fill this position to alleviate overtime costs and to provide additional workforce within the department. I, I moved that.
I'll second.
So you're calling for one?
Yeah, that's what I can, that's what I can support at this time and we're halfway through the year. I understand the concerns and the situation.
Well, we've got one resolution on the floor with a second.
Well, he's amending it.
To amend it?
Yeah, he just wants to amend it instead of two to go to one. I mean, one is better than zero. I think it gets Mark another set of feet on the road and then you keep pushing.
Baby steps.
So the question becomes, oh, I'm sorry, Michael.
Nah, I, I'm just.
So the question then is, okay, back to Steve's point, uh. Does this violate?
No.
Article three, section nine. It doesn't now because we put in the, uh. The budget adjustments. Is that correct?
Yep.
You agree. Okay.
That's why it's important that the attorney does that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I just have, uh, uh, what, uh, do we have anybody in the hopper that can maybe? Come aboard? I mean, I, I, I understand there's training and there's a great deal of time involved and time and money and training invested in all this.
I have, uh, absolutely. There's, um. A potential transfer that's interesting, um, coming to the Augsburg Police Department, a twelve-year officer. Um, and we also have an, an active list where hiring off the active list is an, an immediate. Relief or help because again, we have an academy that starts in August or an academy that starts in January. So with a new hire. You know, we start with the August academy. That person will count as manpower in March. We start with the January academy. That person will count as manpower sometime September or October.
Or the transfer. Or the transfer could start immediately.
Give a two-week notice and be on the street.
So we could have help sooner rather than later.
That is correct.
I'll second your amendment.
I already seconded it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
So this is a motion to amend. Mayor Scully? Council Dillabah?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Rees?
Yes.
Council Scampereley?
Yes.
Approved. And now the resolution as amended. Council Dillabah?
Yes.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Rees?
Yes.
Council Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
No.
Approved.
Now we have items for discussion.
This brings us to citizen participation.
Two quick questions. The contract, and I, can I ask the questions? Oh, I I'm asking everybody, okay? Is the contract with the OBPA, does that include overtime?
Yes.
It does. Because I know in the past that when the contract was so so their contract includes all overtime involved in the airport. Am I right? No? The OBPA that pays for the two officers specifically to go to the airport, they pay for the overtime. Okay. And I was in looking for some information the other day and at the city clerk's office, and I know our office has been moved into the city manager's office. Will the public be able to go in there at any time she's working if we need information to get information? Since it's in your your office? Well, I'm just saying, she's in in your contract. I'm just wondering if if the public is gonna be allowed to go in there, that's all. If we can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Molly Sargent. I wanted to let you know that there is going to be a citizen appreciation night on Friday, July first, from six to eight P. M. at Nadine's Ice Cream Shop. Free ice cream treat of your choice sponsored by the Augsburg Professional Firefighters.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Toohey again. I I think you have one more step to take with the resolution you just took made on the on the police staffing. I do believe the state controllers guidelines will require you to pass a resolution to specifically identify the expense codes that are going to be affected by the appropriation of the fund balance. I think the city manager is making reference to that when he's offering his comments to you. So there's a formal resolution to appropriate fund balance and appropriate, whatever the numbers are gonna be, thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars for police salaries, five thousand dollars for social security, et cetera. I think you need to do that detail to put to put this all to bed. Thank you.
We make sure that's done, right? We'll include it in the mid-year budget review.
The first individual is registered as Scott McRoberts, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
Good evening. Just wanted to follow up on the discussions about E D R, about the paying for the design. That project was part of the original wastewater treatment plant bid back in two thousand and nineteen. It is alternate B. So I find it hard to believe that it wasn't designed already, or else how would it have been bid upon? And if so, is it a totally revised design? And why would we be doing that? Why would we be we be paying extra money to redesign something? Is it only for oversight of construction, or are they redesigning the whole thing? It it did seem to be a little confusing, the back and forth, so that's all. I was curious, I know we're trying to keep an eye on the bottom line, so I'd hate to be paying for a service twice if we didn't have to. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Margaret Hagerty, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mrs. Hagerty, it appears you are self-muted. That's right. Yes, sir. Just for clarification, you do want me to?
Yeah.
No, 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 sir, if you'd let me finish. An individual that previously presented themselves to address council by a certain name, you told me to. Okay, I just wanted to clarify for the record, sir. There's no audio hooked up anyhow. The only remaining individual is Mrs. Hagerty. Would you like me to try her one more time? Okay. Mrs. Hagerty, it appears you are self-muted. Not sure how you want me to proceed, mayor, she doesn't seem to be responding.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Um, just just briefly earlier from when I asked to ask a question from the back, I apologize for not using the proper format and requesting but to be recognized. But under section seven point two of the rules that you distribute to everyone who comes into the room, it does say that no question shall be asked the counselors except through the chair. So anyone on the floor can, through you, ask a question at your discretion, of course. And so general questions are permissible if you so allow, sir. And then just as as a footnote to what I was saying earlier, I have asked before this council on previous occasions for the city's internet use and social media policy to be reviewed and enforced where appropriate. And tonight, I would like to reiterate that request. I have seen numerous comments on social media in the past several weeks, especially in reference to one particular recent legal matter that was part of the city business, if you will. And I I I've been very disappointed to see that social media is continuing to be used as a platform to attack private citizens and dispute the validity of evidence in legal matters and to continue to insinuate guilt where there is no supporting evidence of guilt. So I would ask you all to please take that into consideration and perhaps review that policy as part of the city charter. The charter does say that this meeting is held according to Robert's rules. And I I just think that it would be beneficial to the citizens if those rules were followed. Thank you so much.
Make a motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn. There's second?
Yep.
I'll second executive session.
The motion to adjourn in the second?
All right.
No, it's going to executive session first. And then.
Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical financial credit.
Second.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Powers?
Yes.
Council Rees?
Yes.
Council Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Council Dillabah?
Yes.
Approved.
We do expect, just to clarify, we do expect action. It's possible, apparently. We're coming back, we're not adjourning to leave. Mike, we're coming back.
Okay. Get them in. There you go. See you this weekend.
So we, uh, let, uh, record show all the councils are back. And, um, so, uh, we do have, uh, some action to take. We do need to, uh, bring a, a resolution up, uh, to vote on, uh, Steve Jelly as, uh, fire chief. Or, uh, and, uh, make that motion, uh, for Steve Jelly and our Augsburg Fire Chief. It will be, uh, as the same rate in the previous situation.
One second.
Okay.
Question? How many on the active civil service test right now for the?
One.
We need three?
No.
Civil Service Law Section sixty, sixty-one regardless of the letter?
You don't need three. It's not a, it's not a mandatory list without three, but you don't need three.
Okay, um, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reach?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with that. I was comfortable with interim, but I, I vote no.
Counselor Scamperley?
No.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Denied.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second. On.
On favor?
I seconded it. Okay.